Thank you for joining us, welcome. This is the Tuesday, July 16th Marion City Council Work Session. It's good to see all our members of our RPD here. I was gonna thank the chief for assigning me such a great security team, but I guess they're here for another purpose. So we have a, we have a promotion tonight, so chief, go ahead.
Come on, let's just get this started, the roast of Corey Burning.
Yeah. Yeah. So tonight, we're here to promote Corey Burning from the rank of Sergeant to Lieutenant. He'll be replacing Mark Murdaugh, who retired last month after 30 years of service. It's always kind of bittersweet when somebody retires from the command staff. We see a lot of knowledge walk out, walk out the door with them. And I'm happy that those people paid their dues and gone out on their own accord upright. But it's also exciting because we get to fill a vacancy to a deserving individual who has their own skill sets and ideas, both of which add depth to the leadership cadre of the department. They're also going to be afforded the opportunity to greatly determine how the department operates both today and in the future. So the decision to promote to this level is done only after careful consideration and collaboration with our leadership team. Corey Burning is, is kind of rose to the top of the candidates for this. Other than sharing a hairstyle with me, which exudes confidence and intelligence and a witty sense of humor, he has some other fine qualities which made him stand out. He consistently raises hand when a new assignment or task comes along or came along and he doesn't wait to be asked to do something. He just fixes it if it needs to be done. A great example of this is when we got our new records management system. Corey wanted the department to be able to fully exploit everything that that system would do. And so he would constantly come to me with new data sets that I'd never seen before and show them to me. And he'd say, hey, did you know the computer system would do this? And I would say, no, but how are you figuring that out? And he said, well, I just sit down and I try to break it. And once I know I can't break it, then I know I'm getting those numbers out, which is pretty reassuring when you're talking about a million dollar piece of software. But it's worked out for him and us. I throw out ideas, state his true opinion or tell me I'm wrong. And then those rare instances when I'm right and he's wrong, he accepts it and moves on. You know, when I got here a few years ago, one of the things I did is I wanted to start broadening the experience level of our, our leadership team. And so I started moving people around that had been in place for a while. I think it's important for them to get that hands-on experience. It shows them what it takes, the different aspects it takes to run the department. And there is no substitute for that experience should they want to continue to move up or maybe one day be a chief of this department or some other department. Corey had a pretty good job at the time. He was a sergeant in investigations. He'd been there for a while, he'd mastered that, he was doing very well. It's a pretty good job, other than the call-ins and, and it's busy when things are popping, but it's a day shift job and they get weekends off. So suffice it to say, when I went to Corey and said, hey, I'm gonna have to rotate you out. I want to put you out into patrol, get you some experience as a patrol sergeant. I could tell he wasn't really happy with me. But he didn't roll his eyes, he just did what he was told to do. He went out and he mastered those skill sets and he's got that experience under his belt now, which made it easy to move him up into this rank. So I, I'll ask you now, Corey, who was right? There you go, perfect, good answer. So Corey takes his time, he explains things to the coworkers and subordinates. Again, I refer back to the RMS system. Corey has taken over running our, our system and we've got a group that meets as we try to move forward and become paperless, Corey's running that operation. He's also in charge of teaching that. And so, once we come up with ideas, he figures out ways to make it work and then he's going out teaching everybody on the police department how to, how to do that. He's got a genuine concern for the community. He's got a genuine concern for the people that work for the department. And lastly, he just has a good attitude about the job and this department and this city. He accepts that police work isn't always going to be unicorns and fairy dust. But rather than walling around complaining, he puts his head down, takes pleasures in the little victories we see daily. He keeps his sense of humor, he strives to make things better and he gets the job done, which is what we expect out of our leadership team. Corey started with the department in 1996, so he's been with us over 28 years. He's worked in patrol and investigations, he's managed our evidence program, he actually built it. And he's run that for several years, he's a skilled crime scene investigator. He's proven himself adept at both the administrative matters and the stuff that really matters in a leadership team. He's mastered both and he's a welcome addition to the team. So please join me in congratulating Corey on this great achievement.
You just pushed the mayor out of the way, by the way. There you go, good job.
Thank you, congratulations again. All right, next on the agenda, we have a presentation from the Marion Planning and Zoning Commission and the Marion Board of Adjustments. Mr. Hockett?
Yep. Just gonna do a brief introduction here, where I have Landis Wiley here with me. He is the chairperson of our Plan and Zoning Commission. He'll just speak a little bit about the role of the Plan and Zoning Commission here at the, here at the city of Marion. Just do a quick other introduction of the rest of the commission. It's a nine-member board appointed by the mayor. We do have a vacancy that just came up. We do have a few names that will be presenting here to the mayor here in the next week or so to fill that vacancy, meaning does meet the second Tuesday of every month, where most recommendations are ordered back to the city council or to the zoning board of adjustment. Like I said, I have Landis here, I'll let him just do a little quick overview of the commission and then I'll do a presentation on the zoning board following that.
Good afternoon, Landis Wiley, current chair of your Planning and Zoning Commission. I made Dave real nervous today because he saw me out in the lobby and I had none of my stuff in my hand and he thought I was just gonna wing this, which always makes him a little nervous. So I just wanted to share a little bit about what the commission does. I have been on that commission, I believe, four years now. And it has been a fascinating experience about the breadth of topics that come before it. It's everything from bees and trees to parking lots and signage and proposed retail development and streets and comprehensive plans and just, just a lot of different stuff. So I, I think that there's probably very few things that, that Marion is maybe known for right now than its progressive development in trying to grow a sustainable community to attract new people into this metro area. And obviously, it's gained a lot of plaudits for doing that. And so it's exciting to be part of that commission and, and get to see some of the long-term vision for, for what's happening across the city. Some of the things that planning and zoning are responsible for, obviously, are in the name. So rezoning recommendations, looking at designated uses for the land within the existing limits of the city, but then also starting to look at the continued growth of the metro area as it expands outward and how that can be tied in with the comprehensive plan to make sure that future development fits cohesively in with what's already there. Trying to make sure that what's new are good neighbors to what's already there, but also making sure that what comes in isn't inconsistent with what the city would benefit from over the long haul. As part of that process, we spend a lot of time looking at preliminary and final plats. For those not familiar, preliminary plats are kind of the initial thoughts that developers have around where a street's gonna go, what kind of development's gonna come in and what have you. And then looking through it, final plats, which is really what, what that final vision is before we start to break ground. Always find that to be a fascinating process. As Dave alluded to, we meet on the second Tuesday, public meetings. We get lots of feedback from the community, which is great. Sometimes those meetings are more exciting than others, depending on what exactly is being proposed to be built next door to you. But, but very interesting. Evaluating then site plans, so again, that's everything from where a tree's gonna go to where parking is gonna go, how traffic's gonna flow in and out of new development, how that's gonna impact the existing neighbors. And again, eventually, how that may impact where we want to go as far as the next developments and so on and so forth as we move, move along. We periodically have to get involved in looking at bringing our ordinances up to date, just to maintain, making sure that the, the development practices of the city are, are in alignment with current standards. And, and we've really tried hard over the last few years in particular to make sure that the communication of expectations with development partners in the community are clear upfront. I think when I first came on there, there was a lot of feedback that we heard where proposed development was getting critical feedback late in their process. And obviously, there's a lot of time and energy and expense that goes into the, the work that developers and planners are doing before they even get to us and before they get to staff. And so our commission, the members of our commission, along with Dave, have worked really hard over the last few years to make sure that we're being proactive in that communication with developers. So that by the time they've spent that money and brought those plans forward, they have a good sense of whether or not it's gonna fit in with what we on the commission and by extension, the city, really would like to see that land be used for. The thing that we're, we're spending a lot of time on recently is, is in our uptown, kind of our core district area with some of the design standards that have been put forth in recent years by the council to make sure that development that's happening there aligns with the aesthetic and historic nature that we're trying to preserve. So there's been a lot of instances that have come before the commission where we have to be very sensitive to making sure that that development fits in with what, what you all and I think what the community broadly want to see our uptown and, and core district look like. Obviously, it's an important committee or commission. A lot of the things that we do impact, not just today for this community, but you know, once you build something, it's gonna be there for probably a lot longer than what most of us will be here to, to see it through. So we do try to be very careful and diligent and thoughtful in the decisions that we make, but also in the feedback that we provide, like I said, to try to set that guidance for future things that come before the commission down the road. So I guess in conclusion of that, I, I appreciate the opportunity to come in here. It's always great to have the opportunity to, to speak with members of, of the council and, and hear your visions for where the community is going and so that we can play our part better in helping make, make a efficient development process for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Do we have time for a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Any questions or, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, one question, Landis. So I spent several years, a number of years ago on the P and Z. So my question is, in your opinion, well, there's been a handful of times since I've been on city council that we have deviated from the recommendation by P and Z. But do you look at, do the people on the P and Z commission look at their responsibility to look at things more on a black and white basis so that if something is supposed to be allowed in that zoning, you're going to approve it? Or do you feel that the people on P and Z are able to add their opinion about whether that is the best project for that site? Or, so I'm just kind of looking for how you view that area for P and Z members?
That's a great question. Obviously, a lot of what we do is very much driven by what's in the black and white. And to an extent, no different than you. You know, if there's allowable use, we have to be sensitive to non-discrimination as to what that may or may not be. I, I would say that our current commission members are not shy about expressing their opinions as to whether the intended use or the visual aesthetic of a proposed development meets what we personally may believe is the right fit for that area. I think that goes back to where my comment, where we've tried to be more proactive in communicating expectations ahead. And, and obviously, by the time a project comes to us, it's, it's been well considered by the developer, they think it's gonna be the right thing. So at that point, we're kind of into that black and white space. But I think our hope generally is, is that as we deal with proposals that come in front of us, that our comments are specific to that issue, but also are laying out, hey, next time you bring something forward, maybe in a different area, here are some things that we want you as a developer to be thinking about, so.
I like, I like your comment because one of the overall responsibilities of P and Z is to make decisions that all of you are gonna look at for the next 10, 20, 30 years. And you want to look back at those decisions and say, you know, I'm glad we made the decisions, I'm comfortable with those decisions, so no regrets. So, but when I was on P and Z, there's only one I can look back on and say, that was not the right one, but, but you're doing a great job, I think you're a very important commission, thanks.
Mayor Potem.
Do you feel, first of all, this is kind of going toward the comprehensive plan process. So I'm interested in the commission's thoughts, your thoughts, what you look forward and what you'd like to see come out of that as far as P and Z. But then also, do you, are there gaps in the tool, in your toolbox when you're working with developers or in how you're looking at things where things could be different or you're, you feel like your hands are tied because we don't have something in place that could have helped you to make a different decision, but you can't because of the way we have set that policy in place. So are there, you don't have to, I guess it's, it's more of like a feedback at some point. If there are those, does the commission feel that that's something they can express to say, hey, you know, we like this, we don't, but we can only take this so far because council's policy is blank?
Right. So i- in full disclosure, so I came onto the commission well into the development of that comprehensive plan. We've been able to participate over the last few years as various wards have kind of worked through the, the final pieces of that. I think generally speaking, probably a high percentage, 80 to 90% of the time that, that proposals come before us where we have to look to that comprehensive plan of what's been laid out. We don't run into conflicts where we say, okay, what was planned here doesn't really work. We would like to maybe see something different. I think, I think broadly speaking, that process has led to enough transparency that the expectations have been set for the developers, that they, they know what's gonna fit and we feel like it works. In my time, there's probably only been one or two cases that have come in where a proposal fit within what had been laid out in the comprehensive plan, what had been zoned accordingly, where this kind of goes back to the black and white piece, where we kind of said, hmm, I'm not sure that's really what was intended in that space. I don't know the best way to solve for that because I think like anything else, when you lay out a plan, particularly at the scale of, you know, looking at what already exists, but then also, hey, we've got all this farm ground outside of town and what's gonna potentially go there five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road? It's never gonna be perfect. I think our view is the commission has been that when we have provided that feedback to Dave and to staff, I think it's, it, our sense is it makes its way where it needs to go. So, you know, I wouldn't say that we feel handcuffed in any way in that regard. I don't know if that really.
I'm just curious on your feedback and process.
I think it's as good, you know, I think it's been a good process. I think it, it's been as good as it, it can be. Like I said, it's not, it's art and science, right? So my sense too, in, in knowing a few of you up here is that if there are things that need to be considered at, you know, the level where you, you all are elected to do these things and we're appointed to do these things, our sense has been that you all are open to that feedback and I think that there wouldn't be any shyness on the part of anybody on our commission to convey that back to, to you all, either, either through the staff channels or, you know, through other means to, to get that feedback, so.
Let's get to know, she, Sarah asked my question, but I would encourage you to, 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 to not be shy. You know, because the commission is an extension of our whole team and, you know, we all work in concert with each other. And I mean, when I was on P and Z, many times I wished we had design standards. You know, I suppose I, you know, I should have been more vocal about, about it, but now, you know, eight years into my mayor term, we got design standards, but community-wide design standards. But, you know, I remember thinking back then, it would have been nice to have community-wide design standards. So, you know, don't be shy and do, do, because if you're thinking it, most likely other people are thinking it and there probably is a need. But I do appreciate the work you and the commission do. And this is a very important check-in, glad that we're doing these. So it, it helps us all to do our, our job better to, to, to serve the community in the best way possible, so.
And I would just share to extend on that. I, I do think that one of the most valuable things that we have received to help do the job have been some of the standards that are put in place. So honestly, I think I, I probably have an easier job than those of you who have been on P and Z in the past, maybe had, where there was less clarity around some of those things. I think now, now because of what's been done by council over the last five to 10 years, I think developers broadly have a much clearer idea of what the expectations are before they walk in. And I think that's led to a smoother process. I think there's far fewer instances where there's surprises to a developer or even frankly, a homeowner or a business owner who's trying to make a change to their building or their sign or, you know, again, all these things that, that we have to deal with. I think everybody has a much more transparent idea of exactly where the expectations are. And, and I think fundamentally, from a governance perspective, the fewer surprises that anybody has throughout the process of working with their city and with their elected officials and with their government, I think everything, everybody's better off that way. So I, I think those types of things have been a huge, a huge help.
I do want to thank you again. You and I have talked a lot over the years about vision and the vision for the city. And first, we had to make a merry night out of you and then you answered the call to serve this way, so it's, it's, it's great. Appreciate it very much.
And my pleasure.
Thanks.
Gonna do a brief presentation on the zoning board of adjustment, the ZBA. This is a five-member board. I will point out, I appreciate all of our volunteers that step up and serve, but Chuck Kent has served on the zoning board for over 40 years and planning and zoning commission for a few years before that. So he has been a long service to Marion and he's still our current chair and he's been our current chair for 24 years, so at least 24 years. He was our chair when I started.
That's continuity.
That is, very consistent meetings with him. So we do meet the third, third, third Tuesday, so we meet tonight and it's an as-needed meeting. I'm happy to say we only meet about six to seven times a year. And that's really related to staff being able to work with homeowners and businesses to try to, we know what you want to do is not allowed by code, but let's try to find an answer of what we can do to avoid a variance process. When we get to the variance, it's really, we run out of options and, and this is really the only option to proceed with. So zoning board of adjustment, just do up the last four or five years, five years there of our different cases. You can see we've never broke 20. When I started, we were averaging about 40 a year. We've updated the code requirements, we've created some new traditional zoning that's reduced the number of variances, allows a lot more exceptions for the smaller lots. So we've been able to reduce our caseload and their caseload. So we do do a special exceptions, that's typically related to parking lot reductions, conditional uses, which I'll talk about in a second, variances. Again, that is the relief from the zoning code where hardship exists. And you can see, we've been averaging around 10 a year. Really happy with our board. Variants should not be just assumed and just approved right away. So our board really spends a lot of time deliberating their decisions. Really happy to say that they, they do approve most requests as they're all really good requests because we have truly exhausted everything we could possibly do to make something work for a homeowner usually for their addition or whatever they're looking for. They also do appeals to the zoning official interpretation. So I make a final determination of what the zoning code says. They say, well, that's not what it says. They can appeal my decision to the zoning board of adjustment. It's pretty infrequent, as you can see on the chart here. Conditional uses, though, I want to circle back to those. These are items that the council does not see, along with variances. That increase in conditional uses is a direct result of almost all the oversized garages. As you recall, the council had said no more large garages without a conditional use process. We've had, I'm gonna say a good majority of those are those larger garages, but they are all normal sighted, they match the color of the house, they're not super tall, they're still big, but they definitely blend better to the neighborhood than some of those that did not, that created that ordinance change. The final item is zoning board. They ultimately, their decisions are appealed to district court. They, there's no appeal to the city council. The city council can ask them to reconsider. They can elect to do that or they can say, thank you, we're still gonna deny it. So any appeal is truly through the district court system to, to appeal their decision, whether they approve or deny. In all my years here, we've only had to go once or twice to court and most of those were mediated out. So it was, we've done a pretty good job of making sure we're meeting our requirements for variances. Again, third Tuesday of every month as needed. So if you're bored tonight after closed session, you can stick around a little. You can sit through a meeting there too.
Any questions for Dave on board of adjustments? Their decisions are more prescriptive, right? I mean, they're, they're pretty much, there's guidelines in the code as to how their decisions are, what their decisions are based on is pretty.
Yeah, there's five factors of determining a hardship and they try to make sure that the applicant meets at least one of those five.
A lot less discretion than it would be with like the P and Z or.
Correct, it's, it's, I wanna say it's very black and white there. I mean, there is a little bit of subject to those five factors, but they do a good job of meeting those requirements, so.
Okay, anything else? Thanks again for that. I think this is the first time we've had that, that kind of reporting on, on P and Z and zoning board, so thank you. Moving on, we have a discussion regarding the 2526 budget, financial policies.
Thank you.
Hi, Leah.
Last week at the executive leadership team meeting, we did have our kickoff. And today, we're gonna kick off with city council with the first presentation in our series for the fiscal year 2526 budget. I just did want to note, the whole budget calendar was included in the council packet. There were a few dates that had said to be determined. Those dates will be set in the fall, so that will be. Those dates will be set in the fall. So that will be future coming. So financial policies govern how our funds are managed, allocated and spent. By reviewing them during the budget process, we ensure financial resources are used efficiently and effectively to achieve our desired outcomes. We did a huge revamp of the financial policies last year as we did a deep dive. This year I've highlighted the reserves and contingencies one, as that is the one I want to talk about. Did want to highlight there were some minor administrative changes for the investment and purchasing policies. And then the economic development policy is kind of that last heavy lift to get revamped and that one is separate and will be upcoming. I know we are partnering with Medco to update that policy. So before I actually talk about the reserves and contingencies policy, just wanted to see if council had any questions on any of the others.
Questions?
At the work session last year, we talked a bit about the reserves and contingency policy and the need to add some language guiding when our capital projects fund interest revenue exceeded the budgeted amount. So this is the proposed language that we've are suggesting to add to the policy. In the prioritaries, prioritized order of to the general fund, if needed to maintain the reserve requirement to equipment reserve fund as needed to fund future equipment replacements. And then three is any other purpose. And of course, this is always subject to city council approval as a transfer resolution would come before council. Questions?
Questions on this?
Then our next steps, council will approve the financial policies on August 8th and will continue to review and update those annually. And I'll see you in a few weeks for the next session.
Thanks, Leanne. All right. Next item is a discussion regarding fire department accreditation. Chief Fagan.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. We're excited to connect with you this evening just to give you an update on the processes of improvement, the fire department. As we've shared before in our community-driven strategic plan, one of the goals that we have directly aligns with the city of Marion strategic plan for safe community, to have a community where all residents, businesses and visitors feel safe. And so our strategic goal, one of several that align with that is to prepare for, pursue and achieve international accreditation to better serve our community and embrace excellence through continuous improvement management. Accreditation is something that I've, I've been talking about within our department for quite some time. In fact, even before I officially started, it's something I have some experience in and I'm very much so looking forward to bringing our team at the fire department into that system of continuous improvement within our department. Accreditation is not a sticker. It is not a plaque on a wall. It's a system of how we continuously evaluate ourselves to improve, to meet the expectations of our community. And so with that, I'm excited to give you an update on that process as we move, move forward. So when we talk about the fire service and accredited agencies across the world, there are only 320 accredited fire departments. There are six in Iowa. The ones that are currently accredited are, are listed on the screen. One interesting statistic on the Commission on Fire Accreditation International's website is that only 13% of the US population is protected by an accredited fire department, which was an interesting statistic. So one may ask, why is that the case? First of all, I, I would, I would volunteer to say it's not easy, right? Committing to continuous organizational improvement, committing to the systems that are tied to this, challenge organizations. But it's been my experience that agencies that do embrace this model of doing business are constantly sharpening the saw to provide the absolute best services possible to their customers. So the timeline for, for Marion, as we're moving into this model of how we do business really started a while back. It started back with our action plan and our community-driven strategic plan and developing that organizational goal. One of the seeds that we planted a while back is that community-driven strategic plan is a core element and requirement of accredited agencies. And so there's a few other objectives that I have listed on the screen that are, that are core components that are tied to that process. The next one being the community risk assessment and standards of cover, which is budgeted this year and we are planning to start that project in the fall of 24. This document will be a detailed look into the unique hazards, risks, threats within the city of Marion and then evaluating historical performance data of the fire department and our ability to embrace and engage that risk. And then ultimately identify what are our gaps? And then what are the recommendations that we should consider as we look into the future to address those performance gaps? So this is a great tool, a great planning tool for us. It aligns with the performance indicators within the accreditation model. And it's a quality practice within the fire service and it is a very, very helpful tool as we make informed data, informed decisions as we move into the future. So moving into the, the winter, the time of next, next year, that, that, let me back up. I apologize. The community risk assessment standards of cover document will take some time. We're going to start that in the fall. That likely won't conclude until about May of next year. So we will present that report to you. And then once that report is completed, we will, we will start to write towards the performance indicators that are in the model of accreditation. There are 248 performance indicators that scale over 11, 11 categories and numerous criteria, everything from governance and administration, financial practices, human resource functions, to fire suppression, EMS, hazardous materials, technical rescue, but really a broad organizational assessment. Once that self-assessment is completed, we will submit those documents to the Commission on Fire Accreditation where a peer team will be assigned to come to Marion for a site visit to verify and validate what we've written as credible. And so out of that, a site assessment, there will be an accreditation report that will be created to describe the findings of that peer team. In addition to that, they will be making recommendations. The Commission on Fire Accreditation International will be making recommendations based on the findings of the site team in alignment with the performance indicators that are within the model. And that's where the real value on, on this system of continuous improvement comes is that that document then becomes a guiding document for our department to continue to progress as an agency from year after year. And that is just the first cycle. So, once we get the accreditation report, there would be a recommendation for accredited status or not. Ultimately, there's an accreditation hearing that would be held in the spring of 2026. I know that seems like a ways out. It really isn't considering the amount of work that, that we are taking on. But that accreditation hearing is when ultimately accredited status would be designated by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. And we would continue to embrace that continuous improvement system as we move into the future. So very exciting things to come. Wanted to provide an update to you this evening on the process. And I wanted to answer any questions that you have at this time, but before I do, you may be wondering who this nice lady standing before you is. This is Jamie Doyle. Jamie Doyle is the new management analyst within the fire department, the most recent addition, addition to join team Marion. We're very excited for her to join our team and she is going to be heavily involved in this process with our team along with several other, other systems that we're building within the fire department. So Jamie, if you want to say hello to the commission.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone and I'm, I'm super honored to become part of team Marion. As Chief Fagan alluded to, I'm on, I don't know if you said I'm on day two. So I've been met with nothing but warm welcome from people at city hall and also the fire department. I look forward to collaborating with many of you and then presenting to you in the future as we work towards accreditation and as a fire rescue and response team work towards reaching higher consistently.
Wow. Already speaking the language. Good job. Congratulations and welcome, welcome to the, to the team. Chief, where the accreditation hearing, where is that?
Right now it's planned to be in Orlando, Florida and it'll be sometime between February and April somewhere in, in that timeframe.
Okay. They'll be here long, before you know it. It's really coming up. So.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the chief?
I would add, Mayor, that they do broadcast the hearings historically live.
I was going to ask if we could watch it. Yeah.
Historically, they have.
I kind of like where Will's going there. Chief, I think one comment and one question. You mentioned that, you know, this is a, this is a long-term effort and and you mentioned the depth and breadth of the areas that are going to be examined and that you have to have management processes around. And it's the conformance and performance of the department against those management processes that really end up establishing the basis for accreditation. So once the accreditation hearing has taken place, what is the recurring evaluation to make sure that number one, the original starting basis is intact and that you are in fact having invoking a system of continuous management to improve what you started with. So what's the frequency of re-audit, if you will?
Yes. The next requirement, so the next time I, I would give you is just those items. And so one of the key elements, once you're in accredited agency, a requirement is an annual compliance report. That annual compliance report is, is a report that we generate based on, we have to write to describe what the department is doing towards the recommendations that were provided by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. Essentially you are, you are providing an annual update showing that you are working through your governance systems of whatever the recommendations are. And that report is given to the Commission on Fire Accreditation every year. Another requirement of that is that that report and the performance gaps are presented to the authority having jurisdiction annually as well. And that is an exhibit that needs to be included in that, what's called an ACR or an annual compliance report. We've been using a lot of acronyms over the last day and a half with Jamie. So she's, she's right. Yeah, she's writing, writing all of those down, but that annual compliance report is really the, the tie-out annually to the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, but a core competency with that is that tie-out also with the authority having jurisdiction. So it isn't just something that we are writing to the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. That is a workflow through the authority having jurisdiction here locally in Marion and ties out again with them. So that's the first piece, Grant. The next piece is you do that for five years, sorry, four years. On the fifth year, you repeat this entire cycle over again. So you write towards all 248 performance indicators. You would have sharpened your saw every year through continuous improvement management. And so cycle after cycle after cycle, you are polishing your systems of operation for the community. I would also add, sorry, the Commission on Fire Accreditation International also updates the model periodically. And so the version of the model that's currently in place is the 10th edition. Likely, should we be successful in achieving accreditation in the spring of 26, we will fall under the 11th edition when we go towards re-accreditation in the future.
So just the comment that I really had and you, and you answered in a very comprehensive way, the, the question about what's the, what's the annual and periodic cycle we have to operate against? I, I was involved in a major ISO 9001 accreditation effort a number of years ago now. But that was a significant push, just like this is over two years. And I guess for the benefit of my colleagues, I would just say, when you make the investment of planning and, and retooling management systems and the like, once you make that baseline investment, it, it really behooves you to continue staying with that particular accreditation model so that what you don't lose is that initial investment because this is going to be a big push. It's going to, you know, it's like the commercial, make no mistake. It's, this is a big one. So I just really want us to go into this with a long-term view that once we get it, we got to keep it.
Chief, I think the, your desire for our department to go for accreditation is one of the reasons that you got hired. But if you look at, I think Grant's already alluded to that this also has a much higher workload on your department. So my question is, two questions somewhat related is what has been the impact or the effect on how your department has been looking at and dealing with this increased workload? Because, you know, I went through the ISO 9000 certification process too as a business. And so I think the, the relevance and the similarity is, is the same. There's a heavy, heavy workload for about two to three years and then you finally get there, then you got to maintain it. So, so what is the impact on your current department? And then if you become accredited or as you go through this process, how big of a plus is that when you're looking for new, new fire department hires? Is this, how big of a plus is the accreditation status?
I'll start with the first question that you had Steve on what's been the response of our team. So, so this goal, I was very forthcoming that this is something that I'm very passionate about, even before joining, joining team Marion. I was very pleased to see as an outcome from our community-driven strategic plan that that was also a priority for our internal stakeholders. So our team, in addition to the expectations of our external stakeholders that were a part of that strategic planning process. So the team's been brought along, along the way, we've been sprinkling seeds and what's been exciting for me to see is those seeds are starting to, to develop into small plants. And I'm getting questions now from some of our managers on, so does, so with this, does this mean this? And so we're starting, you know, the, the rate of digestion on organizational evolution is you gotta do it just about right to where we aren't getting too far out in front to, to where the team doesn't know how this process gets implemented ultimately. I've, I, I was pleased to hear that from, from one of our chief officers this past week. And so I was like, yep, that's a trigger for another document that I need to give them. So he can see where this dot connects to this dot and he was already there. So the team's been, been brought along. We're excited to continue to move forward in this next step. Our team is very passionate about data, which is great, great for, for me in my role to see. And they're, they're, they're interested to see and learn about what the data tells us. We've developed a data team since the early in, in this year. That is the team that will be heavily involved in the community risk assessment standards of cover. I've shared our evolution in regards to our records management system and our reporting in order to get our data right. And so we've been teeing this up for quite some time. That being said, we have quite a bit to still do. Your next question on how does this process help, help team Marion articulate needs as we move into the future? First I would add, it adds a layer of credibility. The data, the reporting that, that we provide is verified and validated by a third-party organization that comes in and says, let's see your exhibit. Where is your data coming from? Is the data source credible? It is. Okay. What you've identified is credible. It is facts. It isn't just something that an appointed, the fire chief is, is telling you that they think it's data-driven, it's verified and validated by a third-party organization. I would lastly add that this system, the real next piece to this, and Leanne shared the budget calendar, literally just the previous agenda item to this, the next step for this, once we get it in place, is this. is this system gets overlaid into the business systems of the city. And so that's where ultimately, to answer your second question, that's where everything gets plugged together. So the recommendations that come out of the accreditation report, our data, our response gaps, our annual program appraisals, our annual compliance report, those then become the framework on how we develop efficiencies. Where are we capturing value from certain programs to enhance other programs where there may be need? And then how does that data then show evidence that certain initiatives may need to be considered for the community as we move into the future? That then plugs into the evolutionary systems of the city.
So does being accredited help recruiting?
Biasedly, I believe it does. There, there may be other organizations that don't believe that to be the case, but I do.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our agenda review. First item that's marked for discussion by staff is A9 on the second page. Are there any items prior to A9 that any council members would like to discuss? Prior to A9? Alright, A9, Rachel?
Thank you. Uh, this item was marked for discussion as there will be a, a appeal hearing related to this on Thursday. Um, the city denied an application for a golf cart as it did not meet the, as the applicant did not meet the eligibility, eligibility guidelines in the code. Um, an excerpt of the code is on the screen. The person did not have a disability-related need and they did not possess a person's with disabilities identification device. Um, a copy of the appeal hearing process should be in front of you. Um, so on Thursday, the mayor will open the appeal hearing. The city attorney and the police chief will share facts regarding the item. The applicant will then have the opportunity to share his reasons for appealing the denial. The city will have the opportunity to provide any follow-up comments. And then council may ask questions of either party throughout the entire process. After the hearing is closed, there will be an action item to either uphold or reverse the denial. So more discussion on the specific topic will be held during that appeal hearing. But if there's any questions on the process, um, I'm happy to answer them.
Are we only asking questions about the process?
Um, I mean, you're gonna ask questions, they might be repeated on Thursday, but I'll leave that up to you if you wanna ask questions about the denial.
Mine is more on the, um, how the, I didn't realize that we, yeah, that we offered them if, like, what qualifies? How many do we have out there that have drivers like, that are qualified under this?
We currently have three golf cart licenses in the city and they all have a disability-related need.
You can give me an example.
Um, we have a young adult, uh, 18-year-old who, uh, has mobility issues and wants, uses it to get around with their family as they go to parks or, um, goes on walks. So they're not on, they're just going around their neighborhood.
And are there restrictions, are there restrictions on what streets or where they can be in a golf cart?
Chief, the chief can, can address that.
Most of the ones, the ones that we've got out now, it, it's all neighborhood-based. But when you look at the state code, which is what our city code falls back on, uh, they can't be used on primary roads, uh, through the city. Again, I think the biggest concern is the speed limit that they can go, that they wouldn't be able to keep up with traffic. There's some requirements with our UTVs, which I think some golf carts aren't gonna have. We, we require seatbelts, we require speedometers that light up when people have the lights on and things like that. It wouldn't fall under, um, what a golf cart typically would have, unless they had some kind of aftermarket parts put on it. Uh, I think the thing for council, I, I know that when we, um, brought forth the UTV ordinance, um, a year and a half ago or last year, whenever that was, uh, my recollection was council was pretty adamant that golf carts were not gonna be included with that. And, uh, again, we've stuck with that. We've had some other applications that we've turned down, we've never had anybody appeal it. But that's kind of where, where we sit right now.
Do they have to, if they're using it, have to have a sign on it showing?
Slow-moving, uh, the ones, the ones I've seen have a flag, one of the bike flags on it.
Or that they, like a handicap stick, do they have to use their handicap?
They have to have the, um,
Tag on it?
Identification device, so it could be the handicap placard.
People can see that that's the use.
They would also need to carry, we issue a license, so they would have to carry that license with them as well. Um, I do wanna add that this ordinance was enacted in 1990. In searching, I only found one person that came forward in 2018 that requested the code be changed. Um, but at that time, council determined that it was not a priority as there is only one request in a period of, uh, since 1990 that asked for that appeal. After this hearing, um, the city attorney and I do plan to amend this code just to make the language, uh, easier to understand, more clear about the intent. But that will be coming after.
Sorry, as, as part of the discussion on this, uh, too, as part of the amendment, the Karen and Rachel mentioned that the recommendation for the amended code after the hearing would be to also include some sort of recertification so that it's done every year. Because I believe, what, 2017, 2018, and then?
The third one has been renewed annually since 2022.
Go ahead, Grant.
Well, just to pick up on something, um, Rachel said, um, I, I looked at this and I looked at the correspondence that was shared with us. And, and, uh, first off, I guess, I woke up to the fact that we did have a, uh, permitting process for golf carts and I was reflect, reflecting on UTVs. But, um, you know, I think the main opportunity here is, is that, uh, this language in our, uh, code, um, is representative, I think, of guidance, you know, or language elsewhere in, in, uh, state law or DOT regs or wherever. Um, I think we have an opportunity to convert some of that more mysterious language into something that is useful for our residents to consume. Um, and so Rachel mentioned that, that we'll, we'll look at how we rephrase this or augment it so that there's absolute clarity to people what, what their obligations are and what the requirements are. So that's all I've got to say.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks, Rachel. Leanne, I think you have the next two.
Thank you, Your Honor. This first resolution is one that we actually do annually because we, um, use the employee benefits levy for 100% of the eligible benefit costs in both the general fund and the road use fund. We compare actual to budget at the end of the year and we transfer out anything remaining to those eligible purposes. With that, I'll pause and see if council has any questions or comments on this resolution. So on the next one, this is one that as we continue to review all of our funds, one of the funds has little to no activity is the pension fund. The only thing we've been doing with this is transferring out a set dollar amount annually. A little bit of history on the pension fund, it was original, it originally accounted for a locally managed pension system. In 1992, the municipal fire and police retirement system of Iowa was established and we can, had a certain amount that we had to contribute at that time. And anything that was remaining just has stayed in this fund and has sat there since. So as it is accounted for as part of the general fund in our audited financial statements and has no activity other than the transfer to general fund every year, finance, the finance department recommends we close the fund to the general fund. Um, and we did speak with our auditors at Hogan Hansen and they shared no concerns with this.
Okay, any questions or concerns about that?
Quick question, yes, Steve. So approximately, how much are we transferring out of this each year?
Out of the pension fund?
Yeah.
It's generally only 25,000 and that's just been historically done. Um, it was, that's what it was before I started. That's what we have carried on with. There, there was really no rhyme or reason to the amount. Um, what was communicated to me when I started was that the intent was to continue to transfer just a small dollar amount annually until the fund was depleted to zero. And it just didn't make sense to me, so we're recommending we close it.
Well, it's a dormant, it's a dormant fund. I mean, anytime you have a fund not being utilized, you may as well clean it up and simplify your accounting.
Yep, and it's not being spent down very quickly because it's also earning interest.
Yeah, granted, okay, thanks.
Okay, anything, any questions on that? Are we good? Alright, Chief Figgins next.
Alright, uh, good evening again, council. One of the resolutions that's for consideration this Thursday is the next step in, uh, the capital improvement project for the Public Safety Training Center. Uh, we're, we're very excited to talk to you about this tonight. Uh, I have Division Chief Cale McBurney here. Uh, we're gonna give you, um, a glimpse of, uh, what, what this first structure is gonna look like and what the capabilities of that are going to be. I do wanna share that there will be an update in the council packet, um, for consideration on Thursday. The one update is, is considering some of the engineering and building elements of the structure. Um, there was an error in the document in regards to the building criteria on wind speed loads and the building code. It was just the version of the document that was loaded into, into the, the agenda packet memo, uh, that will be updated and, um, Rachel has already received that document. So you will see that for consideration on Thursday. Okay, so, um, again, super, super excited to talk about, uh, this Public Safety Training Center. Uh, the site plan will look very familiar. Um, it was presented to you, uh, less than a month ago. Uh, council authorized the grading and foundation package, uh, for this first phase. Uh, so this site plan, you'll see, just a reminder, the two green rectangles that are there are two separate structures. Um, the first one on the right is the one that we're going to be talking about this afternoon and for consideration on Thursday. Also in context, uh, just for the audience, up on this photo is north and so the public safe, I'm sorry, the public, uh, services facility is directly to the east of this, uh, and this proposed road is also a part of the project as well. Alright, so on this slide, we have a conceptual image of, uh, the, the first training structure. Uh, so you'll see the, the schematic there as well as a side profile. And, uh, this structure is made up of three sections. The first section being a four-story, uh, commercial tower. Uh, the second section being a two-story residential element. And then the third section is a single-story annex. Um, and at this time, what I'm gonna, uh, do is turn this over to Division Chief of Training Cale McBurney. And, uh, he's gonna be able to share with you what the capabilities of this structure are going to be. Um, not only, of course, for, um, our firefighters, um, but also really broadly Team Marion on all of the things that we're gonna be able to do in this structure. He's also gonna highlight one of the key pieces that we cannot do in this structure and why that the, the additional structure is so, uh, different in regards to risk for our team. So I'll turn it over to Chief McBurney to, to share some of the details about the capabilities of this building.
Thank you. So with this structure, the initial phase of, of putting this in is gonna allow us to do a number of the things, um, that we have to find other places to go do, uh, that involves our fire training. So this building will be a, what we refer to as a clean building, so there will be no burning in this building. One of the reasons for doing that is so that it is capable of being used by multiple agencies. So PD or anybody else within the city can utilize this building. They can go in and we don't have to worry about the carcinogens from the burning process. Because trying to clean a facility to be able to do some of that, uh, is just nearly impossible to be able to do. Uh, the other thing that comes with that, with this being a clean building is one of the issues that I've found over the years is when we go to a burn building or we go to a, uh, an acquired structure where we do burning, uh, sometimes guys get a little more focused on the fire and they kinda let their mechanic slide. So this building will be utilized as an area where we really concentrate on mechanics, the proper way of pulling a hose, the proper way of bringing somebody out of a structure, the proper way of searching. In other words, utilizing that crawl, walk, run philosophy. Uh, we start out with a crawl, we teach those basics and we make sure that they've got that. Then we speed it up a little bit more, then we speed it up a little bit more into that run phase where we actually go more of a scenario-based and actually put that stuff together. Then when, when we get those mechanics down, then that's when that burn facility comes into play to, uh, be able to utilize that more. Uh, in this structure, we're gonna be able to do rope training, especially in the four-story tower. Rope training, confined space training, search and rescue, uh, patient handling, search and rescue. Um, we're gonna be able to work on hose advancement, roof ventilation on the residential section, there is a, there's cutouts that we can actually go up and ventilate the roof. Uh, we'll be able to go inside and there is a, a hole in the ceiling that we can utilize. So when you go up and you ventilate a roof, your roof ventilation only works if you put a hole down through the ceiling. So, and a lot of times when we do that, we don't have that opportunity to make that hole through the ceiling. Well, in this building, we will have a place there that we can continually repeat that over and over as well as being able to go in and actually physically move that ceiling from the inside. Uh, so it gives us a lot of capabilities. We'll be able to fully flow water, we'll be able to do all the, all the stuff that we will do short of fire being in there. It is set up with theatrical smoke that is plumbed throughout the building. Um, so it really gives us a, a large variety of things that we can do. It does have a forceful entry door on it as well. So there, it gives us a lot of, uh, aspects of the fire service as well as even with EMS, being able to go in and work on, uh, bringing patients down in two, three-story buildings without elevators and stuff, being able to get those out of there or, uh, in some cases, having to take patients out of windows and stuff. Like I said, this will be clean so that if PD wants to go there and utilize it, uh, for some of their training, uh, as well as the SRT team to utilize that, it'll have the space around it, it'll have hydrants. We can work on driver training, we can work on full scenarios. It'll be big enough that we can access and use our tower to really go put our tower to work and work on different things. As you see in here, it does have an inset balcony, which a number of the apartment buildings do have the balconies, so it gives us that opportunity to work on that as well. Um, but it just gives us a, a very wide range of things that we are able to work on and do all in one place. Um, but in that same respect, the end goal is to also become more of a regional training facility where we can bring in classes and we can bring people in and start to bring people into the city of Marion to come here and, and do their training. Um, and then it will also help with our partners that we deal with on a regular basis. Instead of getting our partners together when an emergency happens, we can get our, all our partners together and do this in an organized manner, get to know each other better and, and we can work more, more cohesively. So that's just a, a tip of the iceberg of what we're gonna be able to do with this. Any questions in pertaining to?
I have one quick one and, uh, the, the other, other regional entities, they may use it for training, is that a fee-based use or is that?
Yep, there, there will be some form, we really haven't set that up 100% yet until we kinda get going and see what we have. Some of this will be, uh, some examples is, um, there's certification for ropes, uh, especially with our tech, uh, rescue guys. Uh, we'll be able to bring those classes here, but in the same respects, be able to invite people to come in. There's usually a class fee for that. Um, there's a cost for bringing those people in to do that kind of training. And then we can also add to that to, uh, cover fees for that. There's a nozzle forward class. There's a nozzle forward class that we intend to try to bring to work on hose handling and that kind of stuff, which will also bring people in that those classes typically have a fee involved with them that, to help recoup some stuff.
Sure, I mean, just to cover the wear and tear of the extra use and all that.
Yep, help with the maintenance and everything, yeah.
Yeah, great explanation. I think I, I looked at the pictures, but I didn't quite understand exactly how this was going to be useful. Appreciate that. Approximately, what is the footprint size of this building?
So this one is, if I remember the numbers correctly.
Yeah.
It is roughly 22 foot wide all the way across.
Okay.
From all the way through. The training tower itself is approximately 18 foot. 18 foot of that, then you get into the residential, which is roughly 32 foot. And then the annex on the end, it's a singles, single room, that's about 14 foot. So we have a significant amount of, which again, like I said, it's plumbed with smoke into all, all aspects of it. But, so we may work in one part, we may work in, but we may work in multiple parts. We can kind of expand and contract our training according to what our objectives are for that.
Thanks.
Okay, Burney, go ahead.
Finally, my turn.
Our former volunteer firefighter.
I just, I'm super excited about this. I've been kind of following through some of the processes. One of the things I was kind of curious of is will there be a training room on premises at all or was that ever discovered or?
Right now, the discussion a, a, at this point is the new Public Works Facility has a training room. And the, the, to hopefully utilize that for that type of stuff right now.
Sure, great. And just a couple more things here. Will there be any, a part of this structure that's going to be allocated for trench or subsurface rescues or training?
Yep, so when you looked at the overall site plan, there are other, there, there's more ground to that. You know, we have the pond there that we'll be able to utilize for ice rescue. My hope would be in the future, be able to put a dry hydrant in it so we could work on our rural drafting. But, and then depending upon what Public Works does with the 44th Street side, the east side, our hope is to be able to utilize some of, of, or at times be able to utilize that for trench.
Sure.
We're not going to get rid of the trench that we have, our concrete trench that we currently have it stationed to. So that will still be available, but we, we'll, we'll work in conjunction with Public, Public Works to be able to try to
Sure.
do live trenches as we.
Will this structure have capability of simulating overhaul?
Simulating what?
Overhauling.
Overhaul, that's what the ceiling simulator in it is, is it's not only from the cutting a ventilation hole and, and going through the ceiling, but also going in and doing interior work for overhauling by pulling a ceiling and that kind of stuff.
Sure.
We will have in the residential section, it's big enough and it has movable walls. And we can also manipulate props in there that will allow us to do some other stuff as we deem necessary for the particular training that are.
So it sounds like you can also simulate backdrafting and, and some of the other positive, negative airflow.
Yep.
You control all that.
With the theatrical smoke, we can do a lot of work with the ventilation and be able to see that. That, you know, be able to set that up as well as there's some things that we could do like through the doors and the windows with streamers that will help simulate that, that, that flow path that can be generated at a, at a structure fire.
Right. And then one last thing I just wanted to make as a comment, I think this is going to be an additional, you know, other than what's been already mentioned, I mean, it's just going to be a, everybody's going to want to u- utilize a new training facility because it's something new and different, but it also too gives us our, our crews the ability to work with our own structure for the aerial truck apparatuses. When you're using public property, you know, we've been very fortunate and grateful to local businesses that have allowed us the opportunity to simulate on their businesses as a volunteer deal and that's been very appreciative. But this will allow us to actually apply our own knowledge and tools to this and, and be able to use and simulate a lot of different scenarios. So I'm super excited about this and it's going to be another wonderful opportunity for our, our Team Marion and public service servants that, you know, police fire, everything that would be relative to that training. So thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
One last slide here.
Yep.
So project timeline ultimately and how this, the CIP project is, is rolling forward. So just planning forward, the site plan grading and foundation that was approved last month. That work will be beginning very soon and will be completed approximately October. The four-story structure that we spoke about this evening, the, the timeline for the completion of that would be up until March of 25. The Class A burn structure, our goal is to have that project move forward. So you will be seeing that in the future with the construction of that and it is, it is smaller by June of 25 and then ultimately concrete finish and total project completion. Our goal is the fall of 25. One last piece, I want to provide a big kudos and thank you to our internal Training Tower employee team, employee engagement in regards to the design and specifications of this training facility. We engaged our, our own team and employees to help develop the specifications of that that is being presented for you. So they have their fingerprints on this, on this facility. And then lastly, highlighting, but definitely not least, highlighting the importance and criticality of training. We can have the best response times in the world, but if we are not operating as a highly trained and efficient team, our outcomes will suffer. So this will help continue to put our teams in the best position possible to provide the best service possible to our community. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Chief, just a residual question came to mind. Is this fabricated off-site and brought in in pieces and assembled or is this complete construction onsite as any other building might be?
There are components that are brought onto site and then the structure is, is constructed.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Items E1 through E4 under engineering are not marked. Any questions on those? Okay, mic's ready for E5 and E6.
It's your honor. So for E5, it's a, the intersection we're talking about is 13 and 100. So we, we had the deep study, we had Schneider Associates come and give us a background on the entire 13 corridor. And then we prioritize that at the TAC staff level and brought that at the last city council meeting. So one of those top priorities was this intersection in particular. So the schematic there is showing the improvements that are done. Some of the poles were able to leave there. Some we have to move because of the widening and adding of turn lanes. Right now, what we're proposing is the project is a $700,000 project that includes engineering, design and construction. The T-SIP application is a half a million dollars maximum that we would be awarded. This is technically more in Lynn County than is Marion, and so we've approached our partners at the county and they're willing to pay for half of the difference. So if we have the 700 minus the 500, they're willing to put $100,000 towards the project. To help us out with this project if we were awarded the funding. The Board of Supervisors, if they haven't, it's this week that they will be giving their resolution to go in with the packet. So we're recommending that we proceed with the application. The deadline for this is August 15th. And then typically in December is when they announce the applicants that get the dollars for that year.
Okay.
So this is not in the CIP, but we would use that $100,000 out of our traffic signal program that we have annual.
Okay. Any questions on that? Seems pretty straightforward. It's a good leveraging of funds to get a project like that done. Okay, no questions on that?
So the second item, E6, is a motion directing staff to submit recommendations for proposed speed limits on 13 and 151. Again, going back to the deep study, that was one of the items that was recommended in the deep study was to do a speed study on 13. With that, one of the items was to look at speeds, also in the TAC recommendation. The MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, has changed, so it's not so heavily weighted on the 85th percentile of the existing speeds. It takes more engineering judgment into it. And so the draft letter is in the council packet where we talked about all the development that's occurred, everything that's going on with the intersection. And so this will be the third time we've requested DOT to lower the speed limits, but we feel with the 13 T-SIP study that it has a little bit more weight behind it than they're saying that it should be looked at themselves. So we're recommending that this would just be a letter that we would draft to District 6 that's in there and then see what they come back with.
Okay, anybody have concerns about that? Great, thanks, Mike. On the next page, we have F1 under Community Development and an A1 through A7 under Administrative Services. None of those are marked. Any discussion or questions on those? All right. Chief Kitzmiller with C1.
One of the things that came out of the last legislative session was in a, kind of an adjustment to Chapter 400, which was the Civil Service state code. What they've done is they've allowed city councils to vote to suspend hiring practices required by the civil service in one-year increments. So you could vote to get away from the hiring procedures that are required under civil service. You can pull that back and anytime you want, you can also renew it after one year if you want to keep doing it. The intent was to give departments the ability to hire quicker and with more faster cadence, given the tight job market that we're seeing. I think for us, for the Police Department anyway, this will make us more competitive with some of the other agencies because I've talked to some other chiefs and a lot of them are excited about trying to do this to see what it's going to do for them. Again, this was presented to the Civil Service Commission. They did vote to approve it. So the current process, it's, it's about a six-week application window that we take applications. We do test and interview one time. Civil Service Commission approves the certified lists. And then the, the list has to be exhausted before we can start a new, a new testing process. What that means is it's about four or five months before we can get somebody hired. And then we still have to worry about getting somebody through the academy. The proposed process that I'd like you guys to consider tonight would be to suspend those civil service requirements, let us do an open application where we would schedule tests once a month. The third Wednesday of every month, we would do tests. We would then follow up the next week and do interviews. If we like people, they pass both the tests, we could make a job offer, then a contingent offer, get them through the background and the polygraph and the medical test and the MMPI. What we're thinking is it's going to be our two-to-three-month process to get somebody on board. The big thing for us is we don't have a certified, we wouldn't have a certified list to have to go through. We could start testing immediately after we churned through those applicants. We're in a good position now with the Police Department is we don't have a current list to hire. We've got four vacancies. We are scheduling the test in August 21st. So it's a good time if you choose to do this, which I would encourage you to do. Kind of what it does and doesn't do, it's not going to change the, the promotional process. It does not apply to the Fire Department. This is the Police Department hiring process only. It doesn't abolish the testing requirements. They're still required to pass the written test. They're still required to pass the physical test and the interviews, the medicals and everything else. It doesn't li- lower the hiring standards and it will not impact civil service rights and benefits. Even if we hire somebody under one of these during the time that the, the hiring rules are suspended, if they get into a disciplinary issue, they're still afforded the rights and benefits protections that any other civil service employee is going to get. What it will do again, I think it's going to increase our agility and our cadence to hire. Getting rid of that certified list and that requirement is a big part of that, the continuous acceptance of applications. And again, I think it's going to keep us competitive with other, with other police agencies in the area. Any questions?
Questions for Chief, go ahead.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, in, in your experience, Chief, how often do you think that the current process has, with the competitive competitiveness of the market? How often do you think this current process has caused like Marion PD to miss out on like good candidates?
I know we've had two in the last two processes that took jobs with other agencies before we could get, get through our process.
Okay, sure.
And again, I, I think it's, it's out there and again, I think all the agencies are kind of feeling the pinch. And so any, any, you know, help we can get with that, we're happy to do it.
Steve?
Yeah, to you, I'm going to tell you right now, I am completely in favor of this. And I think, I think the old process is antiquated, out of, out of style. And I think you're keeping up with what's happening in the private industry and basically what all the other departments throughout the city do as well. So to me, you've got to do it. If you're going to have other departments, other police departments in Iowa doing this and you do not do it, everybody's going to, has an opportunity to get a job offer and Marion's going to say, ah, we're still two to three months out. I mean, you're going to miss out on so many hires and you already had such a difficult time hiring. My question though, so I'm, I'm completely in favor of it. My question is, we're talking about doing this for the Police Department. What has been the discussion about doing it for the Fire Department and why are we not doing it for both? And I know you have not had problems hiring, okay, so I understand that aspect of it, but why would we not consider this for both departments?
It may be something that we consider in the future. We're, we're not in a, a, a phase where we're recruiting
Right.
currently. So when we approach that time, we, we may do that as well. It is something that we've discussed in the Civil Service Commission meetings. At this time, it's, it's not something that we're actively engaging in and as a part of our process. I was, being new to the state of Iowa, I'm, I'm very interested to see how, how this works for us because other states that have different rules, this is similar to how their systems run. And so I think, I think it's a great opportunity to see how that works for recruitment for the Police Department. And I, I can't help but think that it will be a positive move. And with that, that could be good intel for us to make those moves as well. With that possibility, the very same factors that, that Chief Kitzmiller shared would also apply potentially for the fire service when local communities can also suspend those rules for the Fire Department as well. But for right now, it's Chief Kitzmiller and the Commission to, to start here, but it is absolutely something we would consider.
So do we, do I understand it clearly though, that all cities now have the option to suspend those hiring requirements for both the Police and the Fire Department? I mean, the city has, it's up to the city to make that decision. So if we're talking about it for the Police Department, there's going to be other cities talking about doing that possibly for both departments. So I'm not even sure I'm under, I'm understanding that correctly.
Yep. And I think, again, I think for us, the Police Department, I think we're in a good position because we don't have a current approved hiring list. I think if we did, we would probably try to get through that before we would implement that.
Understood.
Ask you to. I don't know that you guys are in that same.
And we do still have a list.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Go ahead. Chief, I just want to confirm what I believe you said. This does not dilute our hiring criteria.
No.
Okay.
Lower the standards, just speeds it up.
Okay, great, thanks.
Ready.
Just for clarification, I might have missed this in your narrative on this, but can you just tell us what? If all those practices are going to be handled then directly through you, what is it exactly that civil services does? I, I might be a little bit confused. I know they, they take the applications, but yet you scrub those applications and then it's approved. So other than they're allotted time each month or when they meet to approve that list, what is it exactly that civil services does do? Can you clarify that?
Of course. So they're present during the, the test, which they're still going to be invited to show up every, every month. The, the thing that kind of starts the slowdown Um, the, the thing that kind of starts to slow down is once we have somebody pass the written test. And they also pass the interview, uh, then we have to go back to civil service at the next meeting, ask them to put those people on the approved list. Again, depending on the timing of that test, that can take two or three weeks to get that done. Once we get them on that list, we can't really even start anything else until civil service says, yep, you're good to go with this group. And then we start weeding them out more and more.
And what criteria specifically would civil services not extend somebody to that list? Again, I'm looking for the root of what. Why we do create that delay? When you're the one asking for the approval, has anyone ever been denied the approval of being put to the list?
I don't think so. As long as they pass the written test and the fit test, they're.
Okay, and that's, thank you. That's what I'm looking for. I was just looking for the substance to that to know and understand why. From a state level, I understand in smaller communities that don't. Have the lateral capacity to do what they need to do from an HR standpoint, civil services was used for that. But it is to Cusman Jensen's comment is the process is probably a little bit out of order. In that process. So I, again, I, I was just looking for clarity. Thank you.
And the way that chapter four hundred is set up, only cities with eight thousand people or more are even required to have one.
Okay, there we go. That's what I was looking for. Thank you very much.
If I can also add, um, the certified list, it caps the number of people that can be on there for, so for entry level. You can only have forty people. So back when we were getting larger applicant pools. There, after that forty, there would be people who passed those tests, but weren't able to be included on that certified list.
So for example, to elaborate on that then, so when we've had eighty applicants for the fire department. What, are we capped, are we still capped at forty?
So this last cycle, we had a, a list at forty, but we had an additional list. Um, that if we go through that initial list, we had that backup list we could.
Oh, very good, okay.
But for the police department, I don't think we've certified over ten people for entry level since I've. Um, overseen or been the staff leaders on.
And again, too, this provision would allow us to back and redact that. Waiver if we needed to fall back to that, that practice. Okay, thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Anything else, chief? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item. Is F one on the last page, Dave?
Uh, yes, on Thursday night, um, there'll be a motion directing staff to proceed with the creation of regulations regarding the artist live workspaces in the. U one district. So this is the district predominantly around the uptown park, more or less. Um, we have received a request from Gay Sharp Richardson, as you're aware, uh, requesting us to develop this regulations. So she can convert a portion of the former chocolate shop into a uh, live workspace. Uh, that is currently part of the moratorium, as you know, uh, that was adopted uh, several months ago. On Thursday, uh, well, sorry. Right now, at this point in time though, uh, with the moratorium in place. And with our current work in the, on the comprehensive plan update, uh, we're just a little concerned that the timing is just a little difficult. Uh, as we work through that land use processes, setting goals and objectives and priorities of the comprehensive plan. Uh, this might just be a little bit ahead of, of our process. Um, so at this time, we are recommending uh, denial. Uh, or just not, sorry, we're just seeking to not recommend us to proceed. Uh, and again, you'll notice the motion is to direct us to proceed, but we're requesting not to at this time. And that is solely to allow us to work through the comprehensive plan update. Uh, that may get to a point in time before it's even finished. Uh, that it might give us some direction, but at this time, we just don't know what that's going to look like. Uh, so we're just going to ask that the moratorium remain in place for the live work, not proceed with creating regulations on that specific use.
Questions? Go ahead, Grant.
Dave, I'll, I'll admit, I'm not um, familiar with the detail. Of the work effort, you know, that's going on relative to the uh, uh, review of the comprehensive uh, plan. And, you know, the work within the moratorium, nor the sequence of that. But my question would be, I think, um, I think uh, the owner, uh, who has brought this to us. Wants to move as soon as is achievable, one way or another.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering, within the confines of this work effort, could this be a discreet, early on? Box it in, we want to talk about this and just make a decision about what our general. Um, controls and parameters around something like this would be. And do it earlier in the total sequence of activity that you're working through.
Yeah, um, we have brought it to our consultant that's working with us on the comprehensive plan. We brought it to their attention. Uh, but we've still got to develop the overarching, overarching goals and objectives for. Residential development in the uptown. We don't even have those goals or that language even worked out. I think as soon as we do have those general goals. I think that'll give us some direction on, on, you know, where we can go and we can start developing this a little bit further. I mean, in my own research of what exactly is an artist live work, I've gotten a much better handle on it. I'm definitely ready to start. If the council directed me to, um, but I'll definitely, definitely be ready to start once the conference plans a little bit further along. As we get to this land use component portion that we're in right now. Um, I think their council, I think the. The consultants identified it as a use that they want to target in a little bit more, um, not the use, I'm sorry. They want to target it on residential housing options in the uptown. That's, that'll be a whole component to this comprehensive plan. I think once we have those general goals and objectives, I can start getting a sense, the council might be getting a sense. I mean, my commission might get a sense of which direction we should be going with it and if we can carve that out and make it a priority.
So roughly, when will the residential considerations for the uptown be attacked in the overall effort?
I, I do not know. Um, I'll have to follow up with the, with the council on that and I talked to our consultant.
Thank you.
If I, if I can jump in on this conversation, because as a consultant works on the comprehensive master plan, they're going to come. And develop, uh, the comprehensive plan itself will be just complete, basically completely rewritten. And so within the comprehensive master plan, there'll be a series of recommendations that the, the city, the staff will be responsible for um, implementing. So when we get to that point, we will come prepared with, to counsel. On the plan of attack of how do we start going through and start taking off those recommendations. Whether it's done in-house, whether we bring in an outside consultant to help us do that in a more quicker manner. But that implementation will be part of the conversation that we have once that the work of the comprehensive master plan update is, is done.
Are you good, Grant, or you?
Well, sorry. I, okay, project manager in me is, you know, I can't suppress that person very often. I guess the question is, do we have, do we have a detailed schedule by which all of this activity is. Being managed against and is there a fundamental terminal date identified of when we're going to complete this? I, that's, that's the gap that I have in a problem.
The completion of this, meaning the completion of the comprehensive master plan? Plan update?
Uh, well, basically, uh, from, from today till the point we exit moratorium.
On the conference of plan, I can say, yep. Couple of questions, I guess. There is a schedule in the comprehensive plan of when we hope to target specific areas. We're just. We're targeting commercial, residential, parks, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I don't know the specific rollout for each one. Our comprehensive plan goal is still March. Of twenty twenty-five, moratorium expires. November, October, November of twenty twenty-four. Um, so there'll be some act, there'll be, you know, I'm sure the moratorium will be brought back to the council for. Uh, additional discussion, um, as we get a little, right into September, October, decide if we want to. Continue the moratorium to allow the conference of plan to continue working through the process. Or some other direction.
And the, the moratorium and the comprehensive master plan should not be viewed as two separate items. Cause the moratorium is addressing uses. Comprehensive master plan is going to cover. Higher level uses and so that's all going to roll in under that. So there, there, it's all going to have to come together at one point. So what Dave's saying is the likelihood of us, if the comprehensive master plan. Still is on that schedule, the likelihood of us having to extend the moratorium. To allow the work and the implementation of the comprehensive master plan to address the moratorium issues. Is going to, that, that's going to be likely that we're going to have to extend it so we can mirror, they can be done co-terminously.
Um, it, so I guess just to simplify what's, what's the source of my angst on this is I. A visual, a Gantt chart, if you will, that shows the parallel evolution of both of these efforts. And, you know, where we might then have to, you know, if we extend it, we should have some sense of. How far do we have to ex- extend it? So if that's available or could be created, it might just be useful to guide the whole effort and. And, uh, you know, and if maybe a conversation is more effective, if, if I'm the only one with this concern, then, you know, I'm. I'm happy to support that.
I think it's actually really good. Um, I'll meet with our consultant here, um, give them a contact, lay it out a little bit more and maybe we'll do a quick little. Update to the entire council on where the comprehensive plan's at, what we've kind of accomplished, next couple of steps. I don't think we brought that back to the council as a whole. Quite a while. I know we have a few members on our committee, but I think that's a great discussion item at a, at a future council meeting. I'll work with uh, Ryan and Kim and. See what that will look like and how we can schedule that for a, a full update.
And we have just a little bit of some enlightenment is that we do. Have a lot of heavy lifting to do with the visioning committee and our technical committee in the months of August and September. And then we'll run through, um, potentially then uh, planning and zoning, have a review. And then go back to the visioning committee again. So, um, we're really looking at really having them meet a draft. Um, in November.
I just had one, I guess, one question, you know, in this particular. Item that's coming before us and the individual and in understanding their business model. They can still operate this uh, studio, art studio as being presented. We just, we're not. Under the current moratorium, they just could not occupy it as a residency in the rear half. So the business can somewhat continue to. Move forward with this as I, as I can anticipate what the question and, and the ask of this is. Um, they just cannot obviously declare residency in the back of the, of the structure, correct?
Hundred percent correct.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Anything else to add? Okay, thanks, Dave. All right, this brings us to the end of the agenda review for Thursday. We do have a closed session on tonight's agenda.
Your honor, I move to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation as permitted under section twenty-one. Point five, one J and section twenty-one point five, one C of the code of Iowa, three separate items.
Second.
It hasn't been moved and seconded to adjourn a closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation. May we have the council's legal statement, please?
Thank you, your honor. I've reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed sessions and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa code sections by, uh, sorry. Twenty-one point five, one J and twenty-one point five, one C.
Thank you. Before we vote, is there any discussion or questions? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Miskaman?
Yes.
Mayor Abboosley?
Yes.
Ms. Metzer?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sternup?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. We're now adjourned to closed session.